Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. Regular meeting of the Borough Council of the Borough of Lodi, New Jersey. Time, 7:00 PM. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Lodi Borough Clerk has cause notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof published in the Bergen Record by paid legal advertisement on October 21st, 2019, posted in the office of the Borough Clerk and on the Borough website. This meeting is being audio and video recorded.
Please stand for Fledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible).
Roll call.
Councilman Leto?
Here.
Councilman DeChara is absent and said to please excuse. He's recovering from surgery. Councilman Carafa?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Present.
Mayor Luna?
Here.
Also present Borough Clerk Carol D'Amico, Municipal Manager Vincent Caruso, Borough Attorney Alan Spinello, Borough Engineer Tom Soffaro, Borough Auditor Frank DiMaria, Deputy Police Chief Lou Franco, DPW Director Brian Palladino, Zoning Officer/Construction Official Nick Melphy, and CFO Charles Cuccia.
Any certificates and awards?
Yes, Mayor. This evening we have Peter Lupo Esquire here to present the Borough of Lodi with a Veteran Friendly Municipality Certification from the New Jersey State Veterans Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Lupo?
Sure.
Yeah, why don't you read it first?
So, thank you for having me here.
Can you just make sure the mic is on, please?
Is it working?
I think so.
So, this Veteran Friendly Municipality Certificate is actually a picture over here. If you see, it's a picture of a Chinook flying steel from the World Trade Center. And this is being flown over Taliban-held territory in Afghanistan. So, it's taken by Jeff Cantor. I just got back from Afghanistan back in August 2019. And so, this was taken some years earlier. So, it was kind of like a FU to the Taliban, showing that we were taking this over the Taliban-held territory, showing that we have air dominance, so we can go wherever we want. So, the certificate reads as follows. Veteran Friendly Municipality. The city of Lodi is hereby recognized as a Veteran Friendly Municipality in the state of New Jersey for their commitment to veterans by assigning veteran business to chemicals, establishing a veterans hiring program, and providing specialized veteran-only parking throughout the municipality. This municipality strives to make the lives of veterans better, is therefore awarded the official Veteran Friendly Municipality Designation for 2020. Signed, Jeff Cantor, Colonel, U.S. Army Retired, Chief Executive Officer, New Jersey State Veterans Chamber of Commerce. So, this means a lot to us. It shows that Lodi doesn't only support its troops by words, it does by deeds, puts its money where its mouth is. So, we are very measurably grateful to Lodi for adopting this measure and supporting this work. Thank you.[206.59][206.59](Applause).
Approval minutes?
Approval of minutes. Executive meeting, January 14th, 2020.
Motion.
Councilman Leto?
Yes.
Councilman Carafa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Luna?
Yes.
Closed session, January 14th, 2020.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Leto?
Yes.
Councilman Carafa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Luna?
Yes.
Communications?
Received and filed.
Porter, Bona?
I don't have anything, Mayor. I know you have a list of some things that you want to say, so I'll just leave it up to you during your report.
Yeah, just real, real brief. We had a real, very productive meeting this month with Bergen County regarding our Main Street Union paving. Our ADA curb constructions should start up late in March and our paving sometime, sometime in July. We've also reached out to Senator Legana's office, expressing our help with the DOT to address a portion of Main Street that's state property concerning the potholes ASAP and to pave under Route 46 East westbound ramp. Received word back from them today that they're working on it and they should have an answer for us by Friday. I'd like to thank Sheriff's Department and Officer Todd Alcomando again this month for their assistance with their trustees and helping our DPW in cleaning up North Main Street in preparation for our spring project. I'd also like to thank Bergen County for their assistance in helping us clean out the culvert that's on Main Street. And it was due to some fallen debris, which was blocking the waterway. And also compliment the zoning and our property maintenance board. Artie Woods did a nice job this past month addressing some litter issues that were concerning to us on private properties along the Main Street, and they have been cleaned up and cleaned up again after the heavy windstorm last week. And last but not least, congratulations to Thomas Jefferson Middle School students Olivia Martin and Henry Zucalieri, who were selected as Lodi's Traditional Boys and Girls Clubs' King and Queen of Hearts this year. And congratulations to all the finalists who were selected in the court. It's really an honor to be selected. They were all remarkable students and fine young men and women. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Porter, zoning? Mr. Milk?
Yeah, Mayor. I can talk loud. There's a microphone. This is from January 1st to January 31st, 2020. Total number zoning inspections, 85. Total number building inspections, 164. Regarding the outstanding permits that are never picked up, we have one or two left. Everything else has been paid for. Over requests, we fulfilled 39. CCO for rentals, we took in 3,900. CCO for business, 300. Local zoning permits, 2,200. Builder's license, 50 hours. Building department violations, 500. Building department fees, 244,213. A total of 251,163 dollars. That's through the month of January. Legal apartments, 1,250 dollars. Car dealerships, Mr. Paparossi is here, who collected 2,500 dollars in a court funds regarding a dealership for a total of 3,750 dollars. We still have various cases that are scheduled for February 29th. And the report is the same agreement happened with Essex Street, Union Street with the violations that still exist. And the construction is continuing on 72 Content, 60 Industrial, 122 Route 46, 145 Route 46, Mazda, and 200 Brick Street is starting to cut trees and clean up. I'll give you another report in a minute. Mr. Paparossi and I could have a meeting with car dealerships on January 13th. All went well. There were only a few issues. Gary and I will be meeting at their lots to discuss at the end of February to have them in compliance with their striping and everything. Also included in this report is my year-round report, which I believe everybody has a copy. Mayor, also at this time, I did prepare a report, because I know we've been getting a lot of questions regarding 200 Brick Streets with the new buildings. And I'm going to read this. Just for the record, I've been out to the site just about every day since they started moving trees. I've been meeting with George Cooper from Peak Construction and also Frank Mastafiero from Sanitary Construction Company, who is the director of field operations to the site. I assure you that they are in compliance. We proved what given to regarding the tree cutting, site cleaning. A lot of trees that were taken down have been half-dead or rotted out in the middle. I have pictures in my report to show some. I will give a copy of the report when I'm done to Mrs. D'Amico for the file. I spoke with numerous concerned residents and have a running log of what neighbors I've spoken to and their phone numbers and will continue to do so. Their hours of operation are currently 7:00 to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and will be working 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, once the sound barrier of the wall is constructed. I've also asked George to provide me a bi-weekly work schedule, which he has done so. I spoke to George regarding any air quality concerns and tests that needed to be done during and while construction is going on now. I did receive an email back from him on February 13th that he forwarded from Robin Wrights. And he forwarded soil onsite, and he received a no further action letter. So, environmental monitoring is not needed now. We're doing construction. The onsite remediation system is addressing the groundwork. Autoistic remediation consultant for a previous owner said updated sign with direct contact information should be placed on the site fence this week or early next week. So, that should help with some of the questions the town is receiving. Also, he will be assigning with George his cell phone number on the fence from Peak Construction. Regarding any wildlife that was on the property, there was no reported accidents or incidents, and we believe they have more relocated to the ABC property or elsewhere. And mostly, I just want to ask the citizens, if they have any questions, that please direct them to myself or Negerian Engineering and not to the Mayor and Council, as, you know, fortunately, you guys all know the day-to-day operations. And, you know, we do, and we'll brief them on a half-needy basis. We're, you know, meeting here, but rather than you get questions, they should direct their questions to myself or to Thomas Saval from Negerian Engineering to give them the answers. And if there's any questions that either one of us can't answer on the spot, we'll get them an answer in reasonable amount of time. That's my report on 200 Brick Streets. So, I did, I'm going to give Mrs. D'Amico a copy of this. Any questions?
Nick, could you just give them an update on South Main Street, too, with that demolition that's done?
And then, yeah, South Main Street with fire was, that demolition is just about done. They're going to, they're removing the concrete in the next few days, and they will be actually chopping it up, filling, and then putting the soil in there. So, that building will be completely down, hopefully by the end of the, well, established it's got to be. And also, Mayor, I know we've been speaking with a resident on Pasadena Avenue regarding speed racing.
Yes.
Cars up and down there. I've been working with Sergeant Miller. Sergeant Miller revised this. I know he's issued numerous tickets, opening up for parking and blocking driveways. We're in process of, all files, reading the resolutions and reading their times of operation with their CEOs to see if any of them, which probably some of them are out of compliance with the hours of operation, that they are working there.
Okay, thanks. I'd also know that you're working on that Dell Glen situation with Mr. Paparossi regarding that tractor-trailer stuff that's been going on.
Yes.
So, hope you could address that pretty quick. Any questions? Mr. Milk, your support? Resolutions?
Thanks, Nick.
Resolutions. Executive meeting, Tuesday, March 10th, 2020, 7:00 PM. Regular meeting, Tuesday, March 17th, 2020, 7:00 PM.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda. These resolutions are matters covering operation of government and will be passed by one roll call vote, covering all items on the consent agenda. Resolution number 20-14, approving bills for January 2020. Resolution number 20-15, approving bills for February 2020. Resolution number 20-16, covenenting to comply with the provisions of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, applicable to the exclusion from gross income for federal income tax purposes of interest on obligations issued by the Borough of Lodi and authorizing the Mayor, Borough Clerk, Chief Financial Officer, and other Borough officials to take such action as they may deem necessary or advisable to effect such compliance, and designating a $2,850, $850 bond anticipation note dated February 14th, 2020, payable February 11th, 2021, as a qualified tax-exempt obligation pursuant to Section 265(b)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended. Resolution number 20-17, authorizing the return of the balance of the following applicant's escrow deposit, number 10786, in the amount of $350, based on the recommendation of the Borough Engineer, to Joseph Lanzegara, 50 Westervale Place, Lodi, Block 7, Lot 23. Resolution number 20-19, authorizing entering into a Bergen County Trust Fund project contract with the County of Bergen in the amount of $150,000 for the municipal park project titled Little League Field Light Replacement, located at 72 Church Street, Block 89, Lot 4.01, and authorizing Deputy Mayor Martin to be a signatory to the aforementioned contract. Resolution number 2020, authorizing to execute a corrective deed between the Borough of Lodi as grantor and the State of New Jersey Department of Transportation as grantee for the purpose of correcting the legal description for the transfer of property from Block 77, Lot 2, to part of Lot 2, Block 77, and authorizing Mayor Scott A. Luna to execute said corrective deed on behalf of the Borough. Resolution number 20-21, approving change order number 1 in the amount of minus $34,375.31, a negative 14.02 percent decrease for the project titled St. Joseph's Boulevard Improvements. Resolution number 20-22, authorizing final payment in the amount of $210,895.94 to Smith Sandy Asphalt Construction Company Incorporated, and authorizing close of contract for the project titled St. Joseph Boulevard Improvements. Resolution number 20-23, approving change order number 1 in the amount of negative $11,407.10, a 5.23 percent decrease for the project titled MacArthur Avenue Improvements. Resolution number 20-24, authorizing final payment in the amount of $206,741.55 to Smith Sandy Asphalt Construction Company Incorporated, and authorizing close of contract for the project titled MacArthur Avenue Improvements. Resolution number 20-26, replacing and amending resolution number 20-13, which conditionally designated redevelopment of an area in need of redevelopment, tax block 224, lots 1 and 3.03, located in the Garibaldi Avenue redevelopment area. Resolution number 20-27, authorizing the execution of an escrow agreement between the Borough of Lodi and Meridia Lodi LLC as redevelopment for the property known as tax block 224, lots 1 and 3.03, located in the Garibaldi Avenue redevelopment area. Resolution number 20-28, ratifying and confirming the following reappointments by the Mayor and Council. Lodi Memorial Library reappointments. Position trustee appointee Linda Carpino, term ending 2/16/2025. Trustee Marie Shreks, term ending 2/16/2025. Resolution number 20-29, ratifying and confirming the following appointment by the Mayor and Council. Lodi Memorial Library appointment. Trustee John Canizaro, term ending 2/17/2025. Resolution number 20-30, approving the issuance of a vehicle dealer license to Millennium Order Group LLC, 61 Money Street, Lodi, and authorizing the Fire Marshal Fire Prevention Bureau to issue the aforementioned license in accordance with its application and ordinance number 808-31. Resolution number 20-31, authorizing entering into a professional services contract for redevelopment attorney services between the Borough of Lodi and Dakota Fitzpatrick Cole &amp; Giblin LLP for the term March 1st, 2020 through February 28th, 2021, and authorizing the Mayor and Borough Clerk to execute said agreement. Resolution number 20-32, authorizing confirmation of the release from dedication and confirmatory quick claim deed from the Borough of Lodi to Deborah A. Soliento, married, for 10 feet in width property reflected in Block 125, Lot 21.07 on the tax assessment map of the Borough of Lodi, and authorizing Mayor Scott A. Luna to execute the aforementioned quick claim deed and all related documents reasonably necessary to effectuate said conveyance on behalf of the Borough.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilman Leto?
Yes.
Councilman Carafa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Luna?
Yes.
Regular meeting, January 21st, 2020. Motion.
Second.
Councilman Leto?
Yes.
Councilman Carafa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Luna?
Yes.
Introduction ordinance number 2020-03, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 2010-08, towing and storage ordinance of the Borough of Lodi.
Motion.
No.
Anyone wishing to be heard on ordinance number 2020-01? Anyone wishing to be heard, ordinance number 2020-01? Get a motion to close the hearing and adopt the ordinance?
Councilman Leto?
Yes.
Councilman Carafa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Luna?
Yes.
Hearing and adoption ordinance number 2020-02, an ordinance to amend all previous applicable traffic and parking ordinances and to amend ordinance 84-8 to designate certain streets as no stopping or standing in the Borough of Lodi regarding First Street between Westervale Place and Corabel Avenue.
Anyone wishing to be heard on ordinance number 2020-02? Anyone wishing to be heard, ordinance number 2020-02?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing and adopt the ordinance?
Councilman Leto?
Yes.
Councilman Carafa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Luna?
Yes.
Introduction ordinance number 2020-03, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 2010-08, towing and storage ordinance of the Borough of Lodi.
You have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Leto?
Yes.
Councilman Carafa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Luna?
Yes.
Introduction ordinance number 2020-04, an ordinance to amend several police and personnel ordinances in the Borough of Lodi, and amending ordinance number 192-5, 193-24, 505-16, 2016-01, and 2018-13, so as to amend the table of organization of the Lodi Police Department.
I'll make a motion.
Councilman Leto?
Yes.
Councilman Carafa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Luna?
Yes.
Any biresolutions?
No, Mayor.
Hey, old business? New business? Like to open a meeting up to the hearing of citizens. Anyone wishing to be heard will have five minutes to be heard. Anyone wishing to be heard, please come forward.
Hi, I have a...
Please state your name and address.
Frank Beanett, 26 Long Valley Road. I have three concern, or ideas for any concerns. I'm just taking you back there. First, I noticed some of the towns with recycling have trash barrels located throughout the town, where they have three different bins that you can put different items in, so that paper, cans and bottles, and regular trash. I've seen some towns push a bar, bar filled over the towns. They're definitely bar filled. And I was wondering if that would be something Lodi would ever consider, or see that there's advertising on these trash bins and they could recycle, I think that's an idea that you should consider, considering that plastics are accumulating in our oceans, and microplastics are being eaten by marine life, which is eventually on the way up the food chain, and the top predator on the food chain is humans. And third, I was wondering about this Bridge Street project, which has gone through, and I've seen the trees being cut, etc. So, obviously, I've been going through this project, but my concern is what the town would be doing as far as, or maybe it's a different board, but if I come off 17 and make that right on the bridge, you can get home. So, my concern is with the tractor-trailers, how that's going to trap them off 17, because if you come off 17 and hit that project right away, the trailers are going to be pulling out, further down the road, they're going to be pulling in closer to 17. And I want to make the right to go on industrial road. For example, sometimes you play a game of, I don't know if video games put it, possibly of course, with all the tractor-trailers lined up there. And, you know, it's a situation where people get going with the idea is as far as, you know, controlling or regulating or having some type of plan in place prior to them actually moving in as far as tractor-trailers. Because I don't know what's going to be like. And again, it's concerning because, like I said, I use that data to come home and offer you set opinion. Now, there's a big challenge for that stuff, similar to industrial, you know, moving all around, and that's a little bit more of a dangerous, let's say, situation on that bridge, if there's more traffic on the motor vehicle than not, as opposed to industrial, which is off the side. So, you know, if you can address those two questions, I'd appreciate it.
So, if I may, sir, if I may, just to address the last thing. We already, to take advantage of kind of what you said, we already placed no parking and no standing signs the whole length of the roadway on Greg Street to 17. And the thought behind that is, is the one thing we don't want is for tractor-trailers to come out onto Greg Street and park on Greg Street while they're either waiting to get back in or maybe finishing up paperwork before they take off to depart. So, we've already done that, and we're going to ask our police department to enforce that pretty strictly. So, our goal there is to never have trucks that are stopped and idling on that, on that street. In the plans, because I do sit on the planning board, I could tell you that in the plans, the design for them to exit and enter have a, if you're coming out of the property, if you can picture that, a sharp left, meaning those trucks cannot go down Greg Street into town. They'll have that short exit onto 17. And there's supposedly, according to their plans, going to be all kinds of landscaping and boulders that are going to prevent... R O four oh five twenty zero 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 six zero.
Two thousand, R O four?
R O four oh five.
Okay.
Twenty dash zero zero six zero. Two zeros. Twenty dash triple zero six two. Twenty zero triple zero six three abstain. Resolution number twenty dash nineteen abstain. Yes on arrest.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinances?
Ordinances. Hearing and adoption ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero one, an ordinance to amend all previous applicable traffic and parking ordinances in the Borough of Lodi regarding Main Street and Borg Place.
Motion?
Nope.
Anyone wishing to be heard on ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero one? Anyone wishing to be heard, ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero one? Get a motion.
Motion to close the hearing and adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Councilman Leto?
Yes.
Councilman Carafa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Luna?
Yes.
Hearing and adoption ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero two, an ordinance to amend all previous applicable traffic ordinances and to amend ordinance eighty-four dash eight to designate certain streets as no stopping or standing in the Borough of Lodi regarding First Street between Westervale Place and Corabel Avenue.
Anyone wishing to be heard on ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero two? Anyone wishing to be heard, ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero two?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing and adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Councilman Leto?
Yes.
Councilman Carafa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Luna?
Yes.
Introduction ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero three, an ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty ten dash zero eight, towing and storage ordinance of the Borough of Lodi.
You got a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Councilman Leto?
Yes.
Councilman Carafa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Luna?
Yes.
Introduction ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero four, an ordinance to amend the several police and personnel ordinances in the Borough of Lodi, and amending ordinance number one ninety-two dash five, one ninety-three dash twenty-four, five zero five dash sixteen, two thousand sixteen dash zero one, and two thousand eighteen dash thirteen, so as to amend the table of organization of the Lodi Police Department.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Councilman Leto?
Yes.
Councilman Carafa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Luna?
Yes. Any be resolutions?
No, mayor.
Hey, old business? New business? Like to open a meeting up to the hearing of citizens, anyone wishing to be heard will have five minutes to be heard. Anyone wishing to be heard, please come forward. Please state your name and address.
Frank Beanich, twenty-six Long Valley Road. Uh, I have three concern or ideas or concerns, taking you back there. First, I noticed some of the towns with recycling have trash barrels located throughout the town where they have three different uh, bins that we can put different items in, some have paper, cans and bottles, and regular trash. I see some towns, there was no bar, bar filled in the towns, definitely bar filled. And I was wondering if uh, that would be something Lodi would ever consider, or see that there is advertising on these uh, trash bins and they could recycle, maybe the idea. And related to that, other towns are also starting to pan plastic bags that are not reusable, if other towns where you have to bring your own bags and a gram of one that grocery store, et cetera, you get charged ten cents per paper bag. If that's an idea that you should consider, considering that plastics are accumulating in our oceans and microplastics are being eaten by marine life, which is eventually going to work its way up the food chain, and the top predator on the food chain is humans. And third, um, I was wondering about this Gray Street project which has gone through and I've seen the uh, trees being cut, et cetera, so obviously. I've been going through this project, but my concern is with the town doing as far as, or maybe it's a different board, but if I come off seventeen and make that right on the gray street to get home, so my concern is with the tractor trailers, how that's gonna trap traffic from off seventeen, because if you come off seventeen, it's gonna hit that project right away. Trailers gonna be pulling out, further down the road, they're gonna be pulling in closer to seventeen. And then when I make it right to go onto industrial road, for example, sometimes you play a game of uh, I don't know, video games, but of course with all the tractor trailers lined up there and uh, you know, it's a situation where people will be going with the uh, idea is as far as, you know, controlling or regulating or having some type of uh, plan in place prior to them actually moving in as far as uh, tractor trailers go, because I don't know what it's gonna be like and again, it's concerning because, like I said, I use that data to come home off of seventeen. Now, if there's a few trailers pulling out and stuff, similar to industrial, you know, moving all around, it's a little bit more of a dangerous, let's say, situation on that gray street, it's a little bit more traffic on the morning of the day, as opposed to industrial, which is sort of the side, so uh, you know, if you can address those two questions, I'd appreciate it.
So if I may, sir, if I may, just to address the last thing, um, we already, um, to take advantage of kind of what you said, we already placed no parking and no standing signs, um, the whole length of the roadway, uh, on Greg Street to seventeen. Um, and the thought behind that is, is the one thing we don't want is for tractor trailers to come out onto Greg Street and park on Greg Street while they're either waiting to get back in or maybe finishing up paperwork before they take off to depart. So we've already done that and we're gonna ask our police department to enforce that pretty strictly, so our goal there is to never have trucks that are stopped and idling on that, on that street. In the plans, because I do sit on the planning board, I could tell you that, in the plans, the design for them to exit and enter, um, have a, if you're coming out of the property, if you could picture that, a sharp left, meaning those trucks cannot go down Greg Street into town, they'll have that short exit onto seventeen. Um, and there's supposedly, um, according to their plans, going to be all kinds of landscaping and boulders that are going to prevent those trucks, um, from making that right turn to head in into town. So, I mean, that's in the plans, um, but stopping standing signs are already up and, um, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna come back there the best we can, that's for sure.
That's your time up. As far as the bags, um, we have been already discussing about the recycling bags amongst the council and our recycling committee as well.
And uh, the idea of trash.
Yeah.
We're currently looking at that, we're just waiting for our funding, for our grant money. And I'm only option that we're looking at the Columbia Main Street and the water as well inside the parks.
Possibly advertising on it, we pay for it.
We weren't, we weren't really looking in that direction, we were picking, you like grant money, not making like, who knows, who's an advertiser on it, they would have to restrict it.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Get a motion, no else, motion to close?
They're losing twenty dash sixteen, three point eight million dollar bond anticipation note, do you need to move that over, please? What's that for?
Each year we have a number of capital investments that are on roads and sewers and all the other things that we fund that through a note each year, um, so that's the note for two thousand X one, and we'll go to pay off this capital of, uh, I don't know, a lot of things. Um, in our regular budget, there is a debt service portion where we pay off the load of notes on a fixed.
Okay, because I was here for this September, September of two thousand nineteen, and we issued five or six bond ordinances, only one point seven five million, is that part of this two point eight million?
Um, it might be yes.
It might be?
So the two thousand. It's calculated by bond council, this is what?
So this from two thousand nineteen, the two point eight million, we took out a total of two point uh, two point eight million?
We're paying two point eight million in two thousand and four, yes.
For to cover?
Capital ordinances that were already been approved by the mayor.
In two thousand nineteen?
Yes.
So this is for two thousand nineteen?
Well, it's for two thousand nineteen and that's.
Because I know one point two seven five million that was issued in September, and I don't think much was issued before that, so where does two point eight million come from?
It, I, I.
So that's like a million and a half more than what was issued in September, two thousand nineteen?
Because we have new ordinances that have to be filed.
So I know the bond anticipation note can be renewed every year, so this is something that, up to ten years?
Yeah.
So this is something that's, we're gonna pay off in one year or we're gonna possibly renew it?
We never pay off bond anticipation notes anymore.
No, we will carry.
We pay a portion every year, and then when we get to the court, the partner, we are home to.
So they didn't know what the money was to be used for?
No, no, no.
I didn't say, I didn't say you could, but two thousand nineteen, as the council, I was on one pair of question, like five or six separate bonds were issued, and you guys couldn't provide, um, me with an answer as to why we need that money. So one point two seven five million, now we're at two point eight million, and what's the question?
The two, the two point is for capital ordinances, I, I could be specific with you if you, if you give me a chance to respond.
But don't you have to pass ordinances?
They did pass it.
Right, so in two thousand, in September two thousand nineteen, one point two seven five million, so where did the one and a half million come from? Additional one and a half?
The municipality passes ordinances every year. All ordinances are funded in the year in which they are passed. They're only funded when the work starts. So bond council does an analysis, determines that we need that two point eight million dollars to fund.
All right, that's a, that's a five million, thank you, so I'll look into it further with some more requests coming in. So, uh, resolution twenty dash thirty is for a car dealer, uh, for a license, sixty-one money street. Why wasn't there a resolution for one fifty-five, one forty-six, what, for Auto Gallery? That the fire, the resolution is, uh, the fire marshal, the fire clerk has to come and take a look at it, so why wasn't one fifty-five issued a license by the council?
This is a change of ownership. Change of owner, this is new owner.
Yes, one fifty-five was new owner too. One six, Auto Gallery is at one sixty-five, then they expanded to one fifty-five, separate address, separate property owners, why wouldn't they issue a license to sell them? Why are they selling more there? And why do they have double the amount of cars than they're allowed to have there? You could barely, see, but you can't even walk from there, let alone drive a car or have a fire in it. So who should I address?
Mr. Paparos, can you answer this question, please? That's asked every week.
Yeah, and I saw a car carrier on my way up there. I saw a car carrier in the park. Can you show the voices? I'll finish my question.
In addition to your car carrier, in addition to your car carrier, I have a letter here from the D O T, let me finish.
Uh, mayor, let him use his five minutes if he can choose to answer, you can, thank you.
You guys have a contract with General Code, we've had a contract we've done since two thousand and thirteen. Everything has been codified since two thousand thirteen, don't you? Yeah, and I posted the, uh, the download that I have, printout, like five hundred and sixty seven pages, that includes everything?
Is that a question?
How many tens of thousands, or hundreds of towns have we paid to General Code, if I'm not mistaken, since two thousand thirteen?
Time's up. Time's up. Time's up.
You can't answer it again.
You, I answered you three times already.
How much?
Come back again, you'll answer it again next time.
How much did General Code pay?
Oh, you opened the records.
What did they do?
You answered this last month, time is up, sir. Sir.
Sorry. The, uh, the, is the CO for one fifty-five was pulled by Carol when I told her there was a violation. The violation was they were not in compliance, so that's why you didn't send, uh, uh, the fire marshal there and we issued the final CO. Additionally, one fifty-five is not supposed to be selling cars, they just bring their cars back to one sixty-five. One sixty-five has had issues with, uh, their attorney and the last, uh, correspondence at the planning board was that they were supposed to talk to Nick Melphy and if they didn't file by Friday, Nick was going to issue fines with no CO, working with no CO. But the, uh, one fifty-five Carol had on the agenda and I told her, we issued two summonses and, uh, we're holding them off because it's the same owner, that's, we're waiting for the planning board to finish what they have to do before I go to court on Auto Gallery. So, one fifty-five was not issued for that reason, and, and that's why there was no inspection made.
Thank you, Mr. Paparos. Any other here, hearing the citizens?
From one fifty-five to one sixty-five, that's about the same part from one fifty-five to one sixty-five.
Okay, anyone else wishing to be heard? Get a motion to close the hearing, citizen?
Second. Need a motion to adjourn, Howard?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Councilman Leto? Councilman Carafa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Luna?
Yes.
Time is seven thirty-eight P M.